Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to open the May 2nd meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. Chairman Idlet is out of town this evening, so therefore I'm going to chair the meeting. I'd like to announce that we did have a work session at 6:30 today concerning a comprehensive transportation plan for Currituck County. We have not had one approved by the county since the late 1980s. There will be public hearings related to this particular plan, and they will be held May 9th, which is a Monday. One meeting at the Corolla Light Sports Center from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, and another one at the Cooperative Extension Center from 5:00 to 7:00. So if you'd like to find out what this is about and go register your comments and opinions, then feel free to do so. This evening for the invocation, we have Renee Edwards from Sharon United Methods of Church. I'd like to ask her to come forward to lead us in invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please rise?
May we pray? Almighty God, we pause this night to give you thanks for your presence amongst us. We thank you for every good and perfect gift that you have showered down upon us, including this great land in which we live, this great county in which we call home. We thank you for its abundant resources in the land, and in the sea, and in the sound. We thank you for the men and women who model strong values and seek to serve as county commissioners. We thank you too for the citizens who desire to work in partnership with them. For that which draws us here this night, we pray that you will find us faithful in all our work, so that we will administer these county affairs to your great good. And so it is in your name and for our sakes we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
We have some items to add to the agenda tonight. We're going to add item 6A, which is to discuss and act on a proposal by the Currituck County Chamber of Commerce to work in partnership with the county on some projects, and item number 8A, which is an appointment to the Tourism Advisory Board. I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Public comment period. We have many of you here to enter public comment, as I can tell from the crowd and lots of calls and letters and emails we've had in the previous week. The item that most of you are going to address has to do with item 6 on the agenda, and after discussion with the county attorney, we've determined that the appropriate time to address that would be when that item comes up on the agenda. We'd originally considered doing it as part of public comment because that would be a place where you'd be able to offer opinion, whereas in the evidentiary phase of the special use permit hearing, you cannot do that or we cannot consider it. But we are going to allow you to make whatever comments you want to do at that time rather than up front, public hearing. So the items for public comment on the agenda we have tonight, first I'd like to recognize James Ennis. I think you have some young soccer players you'd like us to meet and recognize.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm sorry, but I'm back with the soccer players again. I was here last year and requested that you recognize a group of under-11 age players from our county for their accomplishments, including winning various tournaments in this state and the state to our north, and their coach. I'd like to point out that since that time, they've accomplished a few other things I'd like to mention to you. We have added another team, a U-9 team, an under-9 age team, and both of our teams have either been finalists or have won the Tidewater Advanced Soccer League Fall Season this past year. They have both also either won or been finalists in the Chesapeake Classic Tournament this past season, and our U-11 team, which is here tonight, or most of them are here tonight, also won the Kroger Cup in Roanoke, Virginia. In addition, the parents from these teams have taken over the Currituck United Soccer Association and have incorporated it as a soccer club here in Currituck, with the intention of expanding the opportunity for the kids in our county to play soccer at an advanced level and to travel outside of our county and our state to do so. Last year, we started with one team. Since then, we've grown from two this past spring, and this coming fall, we expect that we'll have as many as nine teams, all of Currituck kids playing soccer at an advanced level, both in this state and to our north. That's nine teams of Currituck kids varying in ages from seven to 15, boys and girls, playing at advanced level with other kids across the state at that similar level. This has required the dedication of many parents, of course, the players, many volunteers, and in particular, each team's coach and their assistant coaches. This dedication has resulted not only in the multiple wins, but more importantly, has caused our teams to be repeatedly recognized and complimented by the tournament organizers and the coaches of the other teams that we play across the state and in Virginia. We have several of our Currituck players here tonight, and some have been recognized to try out for and have successfully made cutoffs to be invited to participate in a national subregional training event in Wilson next month, which is part of the Olympic Development Program. And I'd like for their coach, Tony Vardara, to explain exactly what that means. Tony?
How you guys doing tonight, board? First of all, like James said, the Olympic Development Program, I'm gonna make it short, it's gonna be ODP. This is a great accomplishment for these four kids. They're 99 age group, and we have 99, 98, 97, oh, sorry, 99, 2000, and 2001 playing on my team. So we're not just U-11, we're also some U-10s and U-9s mixing with our group, playing against U-12 age group kids, and doing fairly well. So, first requirement for selection to the U.S. National Team is to be accepted to the ODP. ODP only uses the highest level of coaching, qualified coaches from colleges and professional teams. North Carolina ODP is designed to bring kids together from all over North Carolina, prepare them for a subregional event like James was talking about. These events include teams from Georgia, Virginia, and eastern PA. At the subregional event, they will select 18 to 20 kids to represent the state of North Carolina. This is called the state team. From the state team, they will compete in tournaments from Florida to North Carolina. After these tournaments, 18 to 20 kids are chosen from these different states to form a southern regional team, which compete in tournaments against other four region teams across the U.S. From these five regional teams, another 18 to 20 kids will be selected to be chosen for the U.S. National Team, which represents the U.S. and international games such as the Olympics. So what these kids have done is pretty much first of its kind in Currituck, and, you know, I think everybody here needs to give them applause. When I say their name, I'd like you guys to come up.
Trey Callaway.
And another thing is, this weekend, we'll be hosting the first-of-it's-kind Tassel Tournament for the U-12s, which were actually U-11 competing in the U-12 bracket. They'll be coming to Moyack Elementary, and we would like to have y'all support, and we're hoping to take this tournament. It'll be the first time Currituck has done it in the state of North Carolina. So games start at 10 o'clock, Moyack Fields, and the finals hopefully will be in them at 2:30. So hopefully see you there. All right, go ahead and hold that up. We have something for y'all, too. Go ahead, Steve. You can do them, too. Everybody else sitting up there.
Thank you.
Everybody's sitting up there.
Very much.
These are patches that we have produced as a club, and what these patches represent is when we go to tournaments, our kids will exchange patches with other teams from different states, and hopefully they'll collect a bunch. So we wanted you guys to have one, so you'll remember us every time you look at it. Thank you.
Please, guys, come out. Come on. Your kids, I saw some people in the back taking pictures. We'll give you a minute to get a photo.
Morning, everyone.
Yeah, go ahead.
Morning, guys.
So all the proud parents can get a picture. We've always known that all the kids, we start off counting with Troy, Mary, but this is one.
We're just staying here. Thank you, Coach. Appreciate it.
I coached my daughter, 13- and 14-year-old softball. That's the most fun, and I play ball with you. That's the most fun I've ever had in any sport, coaching kids.
We want eight-by-ten glasses.
I want a jersey.
Phil Bottom.
Thanks very much. Good job, guys. Great work.
Good job. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Okay, next on the public comment sheet, I have Dr. Megan Doyle. Did you want to speak in addition to that?
Why not?
If you have something you want to say, come on forward.
I thought the kids were saying, must know what I had to say.
Talk fast.
No such luck. Good evening. Vice Chairman Rohr, members of the Currituck County Commissioners, and Manager Scanlon. I wanted to take a few moments right before I left to say how blessed I have been over the last three years to work with each one of you, with the Board of County Commissioners, who is very committed, ultimately committed, to public education. Most of the time, as you all know, elected officials get to hear only the negative, especially during these public comment sessions. However, I'm here to make sure that this community understands the positive things that you all have done in Currituck County and for its citizens and for its students. These include establishing a funding formula that puts the local funding for education in Currituck County as one of the highest in the state, to working to provide recreation and after-school opportunities for our young people through the construction of a YMCA, and most recently, to the work to partner with College of the Albemarle to build an aviation and technical training center in Currituck County, something that I think is going to be an awesome opportunity for our residents and for our students. These benefits, all of these benefits to the residents of Currituck County, came through the thoughtful and visionary work of the men and women who sit in front of me, and of the staff of county employees who support that work. Also, some of those are standing in front of me, or sitting in front of me. I'm blessed also to have had a mentor and manager, Dan Scanlon. He has been a partner, an advisor, and a friend, and I am blessed for that. All of these are qualities of leadership that I know that he provides to each one of you as well. In closing, thank you for your support, and most importantly, for the support of the children in Currituck County. Y'all are a blessing to each one of them. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Doyle. I now have signed up Bob Kohler.
Bob Kohler, I live at Currituck on the Sound, 145 Sound George Drive. I'm here today to let you know that on the Fourth of July at 10 o'clock in the morning, a dedication ceremony will take place at Fort Bragg Fayetteville, North Carolina. It's a new veterans' park. The North Carolina Veterans Park pays tribute to all who have served. It's slated open on July the Fourth, as I said. The park honors the state's past, present, and future veterans. And I'm here tonight to ask that you consider my suggestion that one of the Commissioners go to North Carolina, go down to that ceremony. Now, that ceremony, with a little background, it will be representing all 100 counties in North Carolina. Our selection was Vernon Roy Davison, World War II veteran, fought in the Battle of the Bulge. He was wounded. He received the Bronze Star, and unfortunately, after we did get the opportunity to have him cast his hand, two months later, he passed away. Now, down in this complex will be one wall which will have the hand that's cast for one veteran from all of the counties. The other wall, or the pillar, as they call it, will have four hands, which will represent the people who supported that veteran during the war and after the war. And those four individuals will be Roy Davison's two daughters and two sons. They, I talked to them the other day, and they're going to go down. We had a selection process to pick Roy. I was fortunate to find these people. I found two in Virginia and one in Elizabeth City, so we wouldn't have somebody within the county, so we have sort of a fair selection. All the veterans deserve to be there. All of them deserve to have their hands cast and put on that wall, but unfortunately, we could only send one. Now, I would like to have the Commissioners consider sending one of your Commissioners who happens to be a veteran, and ask Paul Martin to be the Commissioner and Representative of Currituck County on the Fourth of July at Fort Bragg. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
May I have a motion?
And I am going.
You're going?
I am going. We don't need a motion.
We normally send somebody who isn't in attendance at the time, if it's easy.
You represent as well, Mr. Martin.
The next person to have signed up is Donna and Adam Bender. Come forward, please. Give us your name and address for the record.
It's Donna Benson. I live at 104 Drum Street in Tolls Bay Colony, and I'm not here to complain, but, okay, I have a boat that is, I live on a canal, and there is a boat across from my canal that has been sunk for over a year. I've called every organization in North Carolina to try and have something done about this boat, and no one wants to do anything. They say it's not illegal to have a sunken boat behind your house. I called the Coast Guard out, they said there's not a motor on the boat, nor is there a gas tank, so it's fine. I called Inland Fisheries and Waterways, they came out, they said that there's nothing they can do about it. Said that it is an association problem. So I'm here tonight to ask you guys for help. I don't know what to do about this boat. It's a 31-foot boat. It sits on the bottom of the canal, behind my house. That's my view when I walk out my back door. So if you guys have anything, any way to help me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I was going to defer to the county manager for that. Go ahead and ask a question.
Is the boat behind the house, or is it, what one is going to call?
The boat belongs to my neighbor across the canal from me.
Do you know who the owner is?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. County Manager, do you have any advice or input for that?
The only advice we have is generally, in these kinds of situations, it's the boat owner's responsibility to remove the boat. If it's normally an impediment to navigation, the Coast Guard, or Wildlife Resources will come in and enforce that, but as she spoke here now, neither one of those agencies are engaging. I'm not aware of anything that would give the county any authority to go in there and take any particular action.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Ms. Etheridge.
Could we write a letter to the Tolls Bay Property Owners Association telling them that Mrs. Benson came forward and expressed her concerns?
We sure can.
That probably would be the appropriate way to address it. I'm not sure the county has any jurisdiction, but we will offer what influence we might have from the standpoint of trying to persuade someone to help you.
At this point, I'd appreciate anything.
If I may ask one question of the county attorney. If you have a vote or something like that, is that not littering?
That's what we want.
I mean, you have, I mean, I'm just looking there, and now you have obviously no efforts being made, and that is littering.
We can certainly take a look at our ordinance and see whether it wouldn't come under perhaps inappropriate disposal of solid waste, if it meets that definition. There may be some other remedies we might be able to put together under our current ordinance, so we'll take a look at that as well.
I would certainly hope so, and the other Commissioners would, you know, consent, and perhaps we might get code enforcement officer to go out and ask the owner of said boat to perhaps raise it and do away with it.
Well, I think the county manager will make note of that. We'll pursue whatever means are available to us.
I appreciate it.
And as I said, if not, we'll lean on them, as it were, to see if we can help you.
Okay, thank you.
Have you asked the owner of the boat?
I have asked him.
And his response?
I asked him last year on Easter, when he was going to get rid of the boat, and he told me he was going to get rid of it, last year on Easter. So, it's not going anywhere.
Well, good luck with that.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. Anything y'all could do, I would appreciate it.
All right. Do I have anyone else that's here that did not sign up for public comment that would like to address the board at this time? Well, not hearing anything further. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you come up there. Go ahead. Would you step up the podium down there?
Yes.
Yeah, to that podium down there, please. And give us your name and address for the record.
David Hughes, Martins Point, Kitty Hawk.
Okay.
And I want to speak on behalf of Kitty Hawk Heights.
Okay, that is an item that's going to be on the agenda for item number six.
Okay.
So if you'd wait until that point, then we'll have you address that at that time.
All right, certainly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. All right. Item number three on the agenda is proclamation for asthma awareness, and is there someone here from association for that? Would you come forward?
I will come down there. Can you focus on asthma? I've had bouts, because I'm allergic to my cats, and I tell you the truth, it is not comfortable, but it is something we all should be aware of. I think more and more folks, particularly young people, are being assessed as having asthmatic symptoms, and it's been explained, a lot of it has to do with the fact we're keeping our kids too clean. They come down with these diseases, develop allergies because they're just not exposed to enough stuff when they're growing up. Has that been your experience? Or, you know? Are you ISIS? Okay, good. Okay, I'm gonna read this and give you this plaque then. Okay, proclamation supporting asthma awareness month, May 2011. Whereas there's an epidemic of asthma in the United States affecting 20 million people, and whereas asthma is the leading cause of childhood long-term illness, hospitalization, and school absenteeism, and whereas asthma affects up to 23% of children in the Currituck County schools, and whereas asthma is a treatable and controllable disease, and whereas there are simple steps people can take to monitor and prevent asthma attacks, and effective treatments to control asthma. Now, therefore, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims May 2011 as Asthma Awareness Month for the county of Currituck, and that's adopted the second day of May 2011. And I'm presenting this plaque to Isis Saunders here, who's here tonight to represent this movement. Thank you very much for coming. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Hi, my name is Isis Saunders. I'm a fourth-grade honor student at Griggs Elementary School. I enjoy music, art, and sports. I am a two-time Currituck champion, All-Star soccer player, and I have asthma. I am here to tell you May is Asthma Awareness Month. I am one of 36 children who have asthma at Griggs.
Thank you very much for coming. All right, item four on the agenda, we have a recognition for Dr. Megan Doyle, and I'd like all the Commissioners to join me down front. Will you join us?
Sure.
Thank you very much for your kind words earlier, by the way. Appreciate that. We feel truly blessed to having had you here, known you for this period of time.
Thank you.
Anyway, let me read the formal part of this. Resolution recognizing Dr. Megan Doyle. Whereas the citizens of Currituck County have long recognized the historic link between education and a strong free nation, and whereas the Currituck County school system has enabled generations of Currituck families to build upon the lessons of the past to achieve the dreams of tomorrow, and whereas Dr. Megan Doyle came to Currituck County as an Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education in 2008, and was named Superintendent of Currituck County Public Schools in 2009, and whereas Dr. Doyle's mission was to ensure resources are available for students to graduate ready to achieve success in a 21st-century global society, and whereas Dr. Doyle has devoted her time, energy, and talents to this county and its children, and provided experience and sound judgment on its behalf with integrity, dignity, and thoughtful reflection. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and county staff do hereby express our sincere appreciation to Dr. Doyle for her leadership and dedicated distinguished service to the citizens and children of Currituck County, and extend to her our best wishes in her future endeavors. Adopted the second day of May 2011.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sassy's going to get a hug.
That's right. Thanks.
Y'all don't know what you got. These guys are good. Guys and gals.
Okay, item five, recognizing National Day of Prayer. Proclamation, National Day of Prayer, May 5th, 2011. Whereas national days of prayer have been part of a country's heritage since the first ones declared by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas leaders of our nation have relied upon the power of prayer throughout American history, and whereas May 5th, 2011 marks the 60th consecutive observance of National Day of Prayer as mandated by both Houses of Congress and by a President in Public Law 100-307, and May 5th, 2011 has been set aside as our National Day of Prayer. And whereas it's good that we acknowledge that we are all God's handiwork, and that it is appropriate to call upon Him in prayer, and whereas National Day of Prayer's theme is prayer for such a time as this, and the scripture is, "The Lord is good, a refuge in times of trouble; he cares for those who trust in Him." And that's from Nahum 1.7. Whereas while American troops fight for democracy and freedom around the globe and battle the war on terror, citizens of the United States will gather on May 5th, 2011 to worship and pray for the American troops, our nation, churches, families, schools, businesses, media, and government leaders, asking the Lord to grant them wisdom for the challenges they face on a daily basis. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Currituck County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2011 as National Day of Prayer in Currituck, North Carolina, and urge our citizens to join together in their homes, places of work, and places of worship to pray for the unity of the hearts of all mankind, and to continue in prayer for our state and our nation.
Mr. Chairman, we have Ms. Adams here. If she, be appropriate to recognize her and let her speak on this.
All right, I didn't even know that. Ms. Adams, would you like to come up? Let me write this for you.
One thing I noticed on your proclamation, I think you got the wrong theme and the verse, because the theme this year is a mighty fortress is our God.
That was last year's theme you read.
You read last year's theme.
Well, that's what they gave me, is notes. I apologize. Would you like to do that one for you?
Well, it may be, well, I had sent every one of you a copy.
Okay.
And sent that, so it is...
We'll correct our proclamation. How about that for you? Within the theme this year, this National Day of Prayer's theme is a mighty fortress is our God, and the scripture is, "I will save the Lord. He is my refuge and my fortress, my God in whom I trust." And that's from Psalm 91, verse 2.
Right, and we'd like to invite all of you to come on the National Day of Prayer, April, May the 5th, at the Governmental Center. We want, we will get this proclamation and read it at the Governmental Center. We have as our special speaker, Dan Bogey from Burgy, and we have various people that are going to be speaking on seven different things that we need to pray for. from our county and various places that will be speaking and sharing in music. And we have, we usually have the students from the high school to sing the National Anthem. But because Ms. Oppegast had a baby this year, and she, her substitute, didn't feel like she could have him, we have a 13-year-old girl that's going to be singing the National Anthem for him. So I hope to see every one of you there, and we thank you for the proclamation corrected.
Well, thank you very much for coming. I'm sure we certainly all can use the prayer every opportunity we get.
Mr. Chairman, could we get a corrected version and put in a suitable plaque like we did for the other ones and get that to them by Thursday? Would that be accomplished? Would that be okay?
I think they were holding that one for signature anyway, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else? All right. Item number six on the agenda. This is a public hearing in action, PB 11-02 Kitty Hawk Kites, Cotton Gin, request for a special use permit for an outdoor recreation facility involving tandem hang gliding training facility located in Jarvisburg at 6997 Keratuck Highway, immediately behind the Cotton Gin, tax map 108 parcel 39, Poplar Branch Township. And I'll turn the meeting over right now to county attorney, Mr. McCree, to go over the details of a special use, a special use permit hearing.
Yes, as the vice chairman said, this is a special use permit hearing. A special use for special use permit refers to a situation in which a particular kind of use is permitted in a zoning district, not as a matter of right, but under ordinance provisions that allow the Board of Commissioners to issue a special use permit when the Board makes specified findings. In addition to finding compliance with specific provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance, the Board of Commissioners may affix other reasonable and appropriate conditions to the special use permit for the protection of both neighboring properties and larger public interests. Pursuant to the Keratuck County Unified Development Ordinance, the Board of Commissioners must be able to find and conclude from evidence presented during the course of the hearing that the application is complete, the proposed use of the applicant's property is among those listed in the table of permissible uses as a special use permit, the conditions proposed meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, the special use will not endanger the public health or safety, the special use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, the special use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plan, and the special use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. For the purposes of this hearing, the Board of Commissioners sits as a quasi-judicial body. That means the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with procedural rules, much like those of a trial court, and to provide for the constitutional right to due process, such as sworn testimony of witnesses, no reliance upon hearsay testimony for a critical finding of fact, and a direct and cross-examination of witnesses. Accordingly, those offering testimony will be placed under oath, and only sworn testimony will be considered by the Board of Commissioners in making its decision. The Board of Commissioners' findings must be supported by competent material and substantive evidence presented during the course of the hearing. Competent evidence is generally understood to mean that evidence which is legally admissible in a court of law pursuant to Section 160-A 393 of the North Carolina General Statutes. Pursuant to that section, the requirement for competent evidence does not preclude reliance by the Board of Commissioners on evidence that would not be admissible in a court of law if the evidence was admitted without objection, or the evidence appears to be sufficiently trustworthy and was admitted under such circumstances that it was reasonable for the Board of Commissioners to rely upon it. As further provided by Section 160-A 393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, competent evidence does not include the opinion testimony of lay witnesses as to any of the following: the use of property in a particular way would affect the value of other property, the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development would pose a danger to the public safety, matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under rules of evidence applicable to the trial courts. In addition, the Board may not make a critical finding based solely on hearsay. Hearsay means a statement not made at the hearing that the proponent seeks to have admitted as evidence of the truth of the matter asserted in that statement. A witness or expert needs to be present so questions can be asked about the particulars of their statement. An example is a petition, which is not valid evidence that can be considered in making a finding by the Board of Commissioners. As provided in Section 14.4 and 11.7.1 of the Unified Development Ordinance, the burden of presenting a complete application required by the Unified Development Ordinance to the Board of Commissioners is upon the applicant. Once a completed application has been submitted, the burden of presenting evidence to the Board of Commissioners sufficient to lead the Board to conclude that the application should be denied shall be upon the parties urging denial unless information presented by the applicant in its application and at the hearing is sufficient to justify a reasonable conclusion that a reason exists to deny the application. With that having been said, first of all, the case will proceed in the following manner. Planning staff will present a case analysis and review of the application. The applicant will then have the opportunity to present their case. Any persons who have a case in opposition will have the opportunity to present their case. There will be additional public testimony of those who are in favor or in opposition to the application, followed by rebuttal testimony by the applicant, which will be limited in the scope to issues raised in opposition to the application. With that said, then, anyone who has any intention of presenting any evidence or testimony to the Board for its consideration in this matter will need to come forward now and be sworn in.
Anybody that wants to address this matter, please come forward and be sworn in. There are a number of bibles there. Please put your left hand on the bible, raise your right hand. If there are too many to get in there, I can do multiple swearings. All right, everybody's set.
You're still coming.
All right. Left hand on the bible, raise your right hand. Okay. Do all of you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Do any of you need the county attorney to repeat all those instructions, or do you remember what he said? All right. I have a list of people signed up to speak. Do any of the groups that wish to speak? Have any spokesmen just found it beforehand? Because before we get to the phase of having you speak, if you could compound it down to just one person or two, that would help us a lot with the proceeding. Otherwise, we'll open every entry phase and turn it over to Mr. Woody to begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this request is for a special use permit for an outdoor recreation facility, primarily which the recreation is tandem hang gliding and a hang gliding training facility. The property is located at 6997 Keratuck Highway in Jarvisburg, and that's behind the Cotton Gin. The zoning of the property currently is agricultural. You can see on the zoning map there, the present use is cultivated farmland behind the Cotton Gin. North of the property, and we'll talk about some of the surrounding land uses, north of the property, you have a vacant tract that's zone GB. South of the property, you have additional land under cultivation that's zoned agricultural also. To the east of the land or the property, you have Dews Island, which is on agricultural. And then to the west of the property, across the highway, you have a few small retail buildings and some scattered single-family dwellings. The property designates the property, or, excuse me, the land use plan designates the property as limited service located within the Jarvisburg subarea. You can see the wetland area to the rear of the property, the extreme rear, is designated as conservation. Size of the site is approximately 75 acres. There's no structure, no permanent structure proposed for this use on the site. The use does not require any major utility extensions to the site, and the Health Department has requested that a porta john or porta johns be available on the site, as well as the access for customers to the Cotton Gin restroom facility. So there'll be two options for bathrooms. Parking will be handled via shared parking with the Cotton Gin. So users of this outdoor recreation use will park in the Cotton Gin parking lot. And to get into some of the specifics, what we're talking about is a outdoor recreation facility or a tandem hang gliding facility. What that involves is two grassed airstrips located behind the Cotton Gin per the applicant, and these are maps provided by the applicant. The takeoff and landing flight patterns will reach an elevation of 500 feet before leaving the Cotton Gin property. And the display you see before you now is the north-south landing strip. Again, those circular areas, or arrows, excuse me, are the applicant's.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh. I don't control that screen.
Oh.
I just look at mine, so I assumed it was up. Yeah, I'm sorry. There you go. You can see the north-south landing strip there. The yellow, and this was again provided by the applicant, the yellow and blue arrows are the flight, the takeoff and landing flight patterns up to 500 feet. After 500 feet, the applicant stated that the planes will then leave the property. And I want to show the other, again, there's two. There's the east-west landing strip. Again, you see the, in this case, the orange and the white arrows that show the takeoff, proposed takeoff and landing patterns up to 500 feet. And I'll just leave this slot up in case we need it later. What's before you tonight, as the attorney reviewed, was you're hearing a special use permit application. In order to issue the special use permit, the Board has to make sure certain criteria are satisfied. As is usually the case, the seven criteria are outlined in your staff reports, which are in your packets. I am going to highlight just a couple of items in particular. One finding that the Board has to make is that the conditions proposed meet or exceed the requirements of the UDO or the ordinance. I want to point out that all the conditions of this application do meet the UDO, except for the buffer yard landscaping required along Keratuck Highway and adjacent to a single-family dwelling. Staff would support a reduction in that buffer yard requirement because the amount of vegetation that's clustered at the Cotton Gin site, we think there's adequate landscaping around that particular business. And again, because the vegetation that exists on the single-family dwelling lot is there, and also that dwelling lot is under common ownership with the property owner. So that would be the one requirement that I would highlight to you, that a reduction has been requested for, and staff does support. Another suggested finding that you'll have to consider tonight is that the special use will not endanger the public health or safety. Staff has suggested a finding that it doesn't, as the operation will occur within a rural agricultural area away from the higher-density residential uses, and also the fact that this operation will have to meet FAA requirements to govern the operation of a aircraft. And finally, the last thing I want to touch on is the land use plan. I want to highlight two policies from the land use plan that staff feels supports this request. One is policy ED1, which is Economic Development Policy, which basically outlines that new and expanding industries and businesses should be encouraged that diversify the local economy. Policy ED4, another Economic Development Policy, states that a land use plan supports expansion of small business startups and spinoffs. And as you know, Kitty Hawk Kites currently operates out of the Maple Airport here in Keratuck County, so this is a spinoff of that operation. The Technical Review Committee, which is the technical staff review of this application, did occur, and the TRC have recommended approval of the application. Planning staff has also recommended conditional approval of this application. Our, you know, a couple of conditions I want to go over that planning staff are putting forward. One is that all the TRC comments be met and complied with. Additionally, that the landing areas will be limited to private use, and what that means is the use of Kitty Hawk Kites, staff and personnel. Instrument flight rule procedures are not permitted at this site, and again, that's from documentation from the FAA. We would like to have written documentation and/or a permit from the North Carolina Division of Aviation prior to the use beginning. And finally, the special use permit is valid until October 2012, at which time it must be renewed. That recommendation by planning staff does differ from the planning board. To a certain extent, the planning board recommended a three-year permit window. However, staff is recommending that we renew this after next season. I think due to the timing of the permit, if it were issued tonight, they would not be able to really operate this summer, so staff's feeling is this should come back to the Board after one year of operation to see if there are any drawbacks to the operations. Planning Board also heard this request, and they did recommend approval. Planning Board had a condition about the permit being valid for three years, which I just mentioned. Also, Planning Board recommended that flight operations are limited to light sport aircraft and tandem hang gliders only, and that flight operations are only permitted from April 1 to October 1. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Woody?
Hours of operation were, what, nine to three?
Currently, there are no hours of operation included in the permit conditions. They can't fly at night, so it's got to be during the day, but Mr. Harris can probably expand upon that.
I read in here somewhere that it was nine to three.
Right. I believe it says 7:30 to dusk.
Well, Mr. Thompson stated the maximum flights are six takes off and landings per hour, which occurs from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Who was Mr. Thompson?
He was the representative of Kitty Hawk Kites that spoke at the planning board meeting. The Board has the ability to make that a condition, if you'd like, to the use permit.
I just read it in the overview, and that's what it said, so that's why I was curious who said it.
Any other questions? I have a question, if you don't. You indicated tandem hang gliders and light sport aircraft. Does anybody know what a light sport aircraft is? Because it's different from a hang glider or the ultralight they use to tow it up.
That condition that the planning board added was based on discussion from the applicant, so I would assume they know what it is.
Okay, we may want to address that when Mr. Harris speaks, if he does so, then, because that's a different class of airplane from an ultralight. Light sport aircraft is essentially the same as a traditional light airplane with just weight limitations and speed limitations on it. The other thing I had a question about, too, when I read the materials, is no TRC comment from the sheriff regarding traffic situation down there, and I think you inquired of Sheriff Johnson, and she gave you some comment about that.
I did. I've discussed with the sheriff to determine if she had concerns with automobile traffic patterns, and she did not have any extraordinary concerns or anything out of the blues. Our discussion was basically that there's other activities or things along the highway that also distract automobiles, and we didn't feel that it was anything out of the ordinary. I'll use an example, as we talked about, at the gravedigger site, a lot of folks will slow down to see the truck there, and we don't really see any difference from that and what would go on behind the Cotton Gin.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. Flight pattern. Of course, I had some people call me. I could not discuss it because it was a special use permit, but I was getting calls from, well, I got a call from somebody who lives in Grandy. Is the flight pattern going to take anybody towards Grandy?
Once the planes are above 500 feet, they can fly wherever they want to.
The hang gliders?
The hang gliders, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then we move on to the applicant's presentation.
Unless the applicant or other interested parties have any questions of Mr. Woody at this point. If not, then it's certainly be appropriate for the applicant to present its case.
Okay. The applicant, like to speak, come forward and present its case.
Good evening. I'm John Delucia from Alba Marlin Associates. I'm representing Kitty Hawk Kites and John Harris tonight. The application you have in front of you is not unique in Keratuck. The tandem hang gliding operation has been going on for well over 20 years at the Maple Airport. It has been a very successful venture for my client. It's been good for the economy and for tourism here on the Outer Banks. We find that encouraging people to come from the beach all the way up to Maple Airport is a pretty good trek during the week, and to find a location that was closer to the Outer Banks, and also would bring with it the ability to draw more people to Keratuck and to lower Keratuck for, like your billboard says, come enjoy Keratuck, come enjoy our shops, come enjoy our restaurants. The Cotton Gin is in a business district. BJ's is just south. There's quite a few businesses that you pass coming up through there, restaurants, gas stations, antique shops, a good place for families to come and do other things rather than hang glide. The opportunity presented itself, I guess, several years ago when John started talking with some other folks down here to try to get this operation down closer to the bridge, not so far up into Maple as it is now. The operation in Maple will remain there. This operation will only occur during the non-duck seasons, if you will. The opportunity presented itself, I guess, several years ago when John started talking with some other folks down here to try to get this operation down closer to the bridge, not so far up into Maple as it is now. The operation in Maple will remain there. This operation will only occur during the non-duck seasons, if you will, from April until October. The rights are very sensitive, as are many of the residents there and many of us, to the bird population that inhabits that area and comes regularly to that area. And the intention is not to interrupt or disturb that in any way, shape, or form. Commissioner O'Neill, the comment that you had referred to about the hours of operation, they were talking about when is the most operations going on and when are you the busiest, and that's usually between 7:30 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon. The request would be to do from dawn to dusk or 7:30 until almost dark, because there are some folks that do like to come up and maybe watch the sunset and fly and things like that. But the majority of the operation is probably, and it has occurred traditionally at the airport, between those hours, but the operation doesn't want to be limited to that. We have, Ben, I think, do we have a little movie here? There seemed to be some confusion at the planning board about what exactly the operation was. A lot of us know what the operation is, we've seen it before, but we've put together just a quick little one, I think, here. And when it's over, John Harris will come up and explain and answer any of the other questions. From a technical standpoint, we have met the ordinance, as Ben has said. We've met with technical review several times. We've worked out some operational issues about where we're going to store the tow plane. If, you know, at one point, we thought we'd store it there in one of the Barnes. Fire department didn't want that to happen. In bad weather, that plane will be flown back to the airport and put in the hangar. The operation at Maple still is going to continue. That operation is, it will probably be more limited in the summer, which probably would be better for the summer, some of the summer air traffic up in that vicinity. So moving this operation down to the south helps in that way also. Are we ready? I'll show this real quick.
The video should start momentarily.
I'll let John come up.
If I could address the video, please do. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. I shot this video, this is very amateurish. I'll just slide. This is a tug taking off. Give you an idea of the noise. And you'll notice that, there goes the hang glider behind it, but you'll notice that in about 30 seconds, the noise really fades out. So as soon as the tug climbs out a little bit, the noise really fades out, right there. And he's probably at about 250 feet. Another 30 seconds, he'll be at 500 feet or more, and hardly noticeable. And this is bypass 158 on Easter Sunday. Both of these I shot from 100 feet. This is 100 feet from the bypass, and the other one was 100 feet from the tug when I shot it, as a comparison. This is from the Cotton Gin parking lot that I shot this. Just wanted to give a noise comparison. And the, but the key thing, the key point is the noise from the tug dissipates very quickly as it climbs out. There's an initial burst at takeoff and then dissipates very quickly. Let's see, on leaving the property at 500 feet, I need to restate that, because we, there's plenty of room on the property to fly our pattern and climb up to 2,000 feet, and in many cases, we will be over the property for the entire pattern. But what we wanted to say is we wouldn't fly outside the property under 500 feet. So if we're below 500 feet, we're not going to fly outside the boundary of the property. And most of the operations will take place over the property, because it's large. But, you know, if we departed for some reason, we wouldn't do that lower than 500 feet, and, you know, which would be, the noise would be negligible, if noticeable at all. Let's see, it would be nice to allow other ultralights to fly in. There are three or four in the county, I think. Not very many, but it would be allow, nice to allow them to fly into the airstrip, if They're all based and hangared in other places. Light sport aircraft, I believe, has a gross weight of 1,320 pounds. So light sport aircraft, basically, the ultralights grew into light sport aircraft. So there would be a combination of light sport aircraft and ultralights there, and the hang gliders. The hang gliders, all the hang gliders, according to the FAA, are classified as ultralights. The FAA calls hang gliders ultralights. And if there are any more questions on the time of operation, I'm happy to address those. I think we covered, let's see, and any questions on the noise, too, I'm happy to address. We will be continuing to operate at the airport, but most of it will be light sport aircraft instruction there. Tandem operation will be at Cotton Gin, if approved, in the summertime. We have the FAA approval now. We have to, if everything is approved at this meeting, we have to send another piece of paper back to them for the final piece of paper from them, and from North Carolina Division of Aviation. We will not be flying over churches or schools. We have a, we have churches and schools around the airport, and residents around the airport, and we haven't had any complaints around the airport of us flying over houses or over the schools or churches. With respect to flying over 158, we will be, again, most of the traffic pattern, our traffic pattern, will be over the property. If we're flying over 158, it will be at altitude, you know, above 500 feet. So I don't see that as an issue. Certainly, the end of the airport, the Currituck Airport, one end, you fly over 158, and the other end, you fly over 168. At the airstrip at Wright Brothers, one end, you fly over Collington Road, which is very busy. The end of the runway is very close to Collington Road, and the other end is very close to the bypass, and there aren't safety issues with those. I understand that at the commemoration of the COA training facility at the airport, which I think is a wonderful, wonderful thing for Currituck County, that we were operating at the time that ceremony was going on, and it wasn't a distraction to the ceremony, even though we were operating during that time. And I would ask the commissioners to allow us to give it a try. Let us operate, let's see how it works. I know that our customers love it, and I know the customers will be happy, so I ask the commissioners to allow us to give it a try and see how the people of Currituck like the operation after the initial operating period. Any questions?
Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris, at what altitude is the glider released from the towing aircraft?
Normally at 2,000 feet, sometimes at 1,500 feet, but normally at 2,000 feet. And occasionally, we will tow to a mile high and release for a really long gliding flight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris, I have a couple of questions. In the proposal here, it says nine to three. We were talking about it earlier. Next sentence down, it says 7:30 to dusk. Which is it?
7:30 to dusk is what we are asking for. Our operations typically go from about 8:00 to around, an average day is 8 to around 1:00. But if we have very favorable, that's because in the summertime, land heats up, you get all this thermal activity, it gets bumpy, and it's not comfortable flying, so lots of times, we have to shut down in the afternoons. But on a good day, like a nice northeast day, like we had, you know, recently, a nice smooth air day, we could operate all day in conditions like that. But it's not often that we do that.
The concerns I have are daylight saving time. Dusk moves later in the day, 7, 8:00, you know, midsummer. I'm assuming that's still part of dusk, daylight saving time. So in personal opinion, I feel like that might be a little bit late, if that's what dusk is. Maybe, I don't know how to address that.
It would be rare that we would have activity at that time, but, you know, we might, on a rare occasion, have activity at that time.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you could have a good day there, or a good week, and it's happening, and it's 7:00, 7:30 at night, and you can't fly at night, they said, but you can go up for one last flight. And how long does a flight last?
12 to 15 minutes.
That's it?
For the hang glider, yes.
Okay.
The tug flight is only around five minutes.
Okay. Vice Chairman Rohr talked about a light sport, and you said it was like 1,200 or 1,300 pounds bigger. Is it, what's the noise level at that on a light sport and/or light sports? You had said light sports only at Maple Airport. Are you going to have light sport instruction here at this field also?
We don't, we don't plan to have light sport instruction at this field right now, just at the airport.
Okay, as far as noise level for a light sport?
But we may use a light sport aircraft to tow up a hang glider, to tow up an ultralight or a hang glider. And the noise level would be comparable to what you heard. The engine in the aircraft that you saw is the same engine that's used in most light sport aircraft, and the noise level is about the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
One last question. What is the prevailing wind pattern that will be during your time of operation? Southeast, southwest?
Southwest, summertime prevailing is southwest.
Can you put the map back on, Mr. Woody, and show us what, show us that direction?
Southwest means that the wind is blowing out towards the sound or the marsh areas.
So it'd be blowing away from?
Blowing away from the highway, that's correct.
Would also mean that we'd be launching from back against the woods, and probably no one from the Cotton Gin from along the road frontage would even hear the operation at all, not at all, even take off anything. I don't think they'll hear it, because the wind will carry the sound towards the, out to the sound, the sound will be carried out to the sound and away from any building.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Woody. If you put that same map back up there, you did a video 100 foot from 158.
Yes.
How far, and we could hear the noise from the cars, how far back are you actually going to be operating from 158?
Let's see, I can't recall that distance. It's about 7,000 feet?
Several thousand.
Okay, several thousand feet.
I can give you, if you look at the map, you see the grass strip that does not have the arrows on it?
Yes.
The one that's east-west, that is 1,825 feet.
From the road?
No, that's just the length of that grass strip, it was 18.
Okay, I want to know how far from the point that's closest to the road, it is to the road. You follow what I'm saying?
I do, I was trying to give you a context.
Oh, okay, so what is that, 1,000 foot, maybe? 800 foot?
Probably more like 800, if I had to guess.
I have one more question. The gold line that we have, are there any residences, and I'm assuming this is the side perimeter of the Cotton Gin property, are there any homes along that perimeter, or the residential homes, are they out closer to the road? You follow me? Down each side, the, which would be your flight pattern, your takeoff pattern, would you be taking off beside any homes?
No.
Okay.
No, there is nothing to the north for quite a distance, and then it's quite a distance south to, most of the homes in that area are, in that immediate area are along the bypass.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? Safety record, you've been doing this over 20 years.
Yes.
How many times per day do you normally average?
I don't know what average per day is, off the top of my head. Let's see. I'd say maybe, well, for the whole year, or?
The whole year. You, what do you have, 1,000 flights?
1,000 flights, 1,000 flights. If you spread it out over a year, it would be very, very few per day.
But therefore, several thousand, 2,000 flights in the course of a summer?
Yes, from April, from April to, from April through October, around 1,000.
Okay, well, that's, and you've been doing that 20,000 times. And your safety record, I think you might have had one mishap, as far as I can remember.
Something like that, yeah. One is what I recall, and the major, the major accident was some, was a competition pilot that towed up to a very high altitude, and he was doing aerobatics.
Right.
And he broke his glider, and then his parachute got tangled, and he spun in, but he's, he's still flying today.
All right, that's, so actually.
That wasn't a tandem situation.
Oh, me too. That's, it's amazing that you do have that record, and you've proven that it is quite safe with that, that is.
We have a good crew.
Many people, you know, around schools and things like that, think about an airplane crashing into a school, et cetera, and would alleviate a lot of fears, those people who have those, knowing that, you know, it's, it's very safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the commissioners? I have two I'd like to address while you're here, Mr. Harris. Light sport aircraft, of course, includes a variety of other types of aircraft than the hang gliders you're talking about, the ultralights, including rotorcraft gyroplanes, powered parachutes, some of the others. Are any of these anticipated to be flown in there? You indicated you'd like maybe some of the other private ultralight owners to be able to use this field. I assume you're talking about some of the ones that we see around here typically during the summer season, like the powered parachutes?
Yes.
Okay. Any actual light sport aircraft that you're anticipating, other than those that might be used as a tow vehicle for your operation?
No.
Okay, and I would like to see that we're addressing. Okay, and I would like to see that we're addressing certificated light sport aircraft, because many general aviation aircraft can be operated in that category by pilot licensed only in that category, as long as they meet the weight requirements. We wouldn't want any Cessna 172s setting down over there, you know, as a result, because their operating parameters are substantially different than that. Road signage, what are you going to do to let people know that it's there? I had asked one time, months ago, when we first talked about this, about where you can put signs up warning people that there could be low-flying aircraft, which is typically done around airports. Have you made any determination about that? And what are you going to do about advertising the operation as far as road signage?
For advertising initially, we would do what we're, you know, what we're doing now to direct people to the property. Long term, we would certainly like to have a sign out front, but that hasn't been discussed. So, you know, if this, if, you know, if it's approved, then, you know, we definitely would like to have a sign out front when it's renewed.
Well, the reason I mention that is that I've been by your operation down across from Jockeys Ridge, and there's pinwheels and hang gliders out there and all sorts of things. We don't have that in Keratuck County, just as a point of ordinance is up here. But the other thing about the road signage, warning motorists of impending aircraft operation they're likely to encounter.
We can put up any kind of safety signage that's needed.
Has DOT been, discussed that with you, or have you talked to them about that?
I have not.
I don't have any other questions. Any of you have any further?
I got one more. Jobs, how many?
Well, to start with, no more than we're currently employing, but what we think we can do, because of the proximity to the beach, is we think we can grow the operation and employ more people. Right now, it would be the same number of people we're employing at the airport, to start off.
How many?
Which is, let's see, four? Five? Thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Harris, applicant? You have one individual that has questions.
Mr. Lippman?
Yes. I can ask, I have some questions I wanted to ask on Berry Lippman at 7112 Keratuck Highway. And as I said, several questions to pose to Mr. Harris. This type of request is not a new issue for Keratuck County. In 2003, Mr. Harris, you and Harvey Roberts proposed a hang gliding operation in Shawboro. I understand public opposition led to this proposal being withdrawn. Can you explain the difference between that Shawboro proposal and the current Cotton Gin proposal?
There's, you know, well, it's been so long, I don't recall, but I think there's more property here. I believe there's more property here, I'm not sure, than what was proposed earlier, years ago.
Second question, sorry, second question. The FAA application, which I have here, indicates 100 flights a month, 1,200 for a year. But there's been a lot, questions raised already this evening about the number of flights. We heard as many as six flights an hour at peak on certain days. What will actually be the number of flights per your best estimate in season?
In season, we'll probably average about four flights an hour from eight o'clock to one o'clock in season, on good weather days. A lot of, you know, many days will be weathered out, we're not able to fly at all.
But you think the estimate of 100 flights a month is reasonable, or six flights an hour at peak?
Six flights is a, is an operating term. It's something that is possible for us to do if everything is perfect. And it normally, it may occur for one hour, but you can't sustain it, and then we, you know, it slipped. But our average is more like four flights an hour.
Also, the FAA, I'm sorry, the FAA application that Mr. Harris filed spoke to anticipated third plane in five years. Single-engine and glider added to the operation. That's not brought out in the special use permit, would you comment on that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Your application to the FAA indicated in five years, the addition of an additional, the addition of one single-engine plane and one glider. But I did not see that in the special use permit application, can you comment?
Let's see, I'm not familiar with that. If I could call on Bruce, who filled out the application, we'll get an answer.
Was he sworn?
Were you sworn?
Yeah. Bruce Weaver, John Harrison, Kitty Alkites. The application was in five years. There wasn't a one-year increment, or two-year increment, or three-year increment. It was in five years, what would you envision if we, everything goes great, and all the neighbors are satisfied, and everyone in Keratuck County is satisfied after one year, and the business continues to grow, like we would like it to, so we can employ more people and do more flights and all that, there may be, there may necessitate an extra ultralight vehicle, an extra hang glider in five years. That certainly isn't the case in this first year, likely not the second year, it just depends on the growth that we experience out there.
In the application, he's saying it says?
In five years.
Okay, but, well, weren't you saying that these were general aviation aircraft?
Single-engine hang glider.
Okay, well, basically, that means ultralights and light sport aircraft.
Correct.
Yes.
But that's a fifty, that's a 50% increase over the current requests for the special use permit that is not brought out in any part of the special use permit, your anticipated business plan. That's my point, I'm trying to get an understanding of where you want this to go, so all of us can understand your business plan.
Well, we would certainly like the business to grow. In order to accommodate that growth, in the future, we may ask to have another hang glider and another ultralight available for us, that's not what we're asking for right now.
Fine, thank you. Several other questions. Mr. Harris, what efforts beyond the formal requirements to communicate with residents and businesses in the community were made by your business and by your staff?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. What efforts beyond the formal requirements, sending letters to adjacent landowners, putting out the notice of a public hearing? What efforts were made by you and your staff to communicate with residents and businesses in the community, ranging from Grandi South?
I, let's see, well, I called everyone that I knew, and told them about the public hearing. And I went door-to-door to neighbors around the Cotton Gin and talked to them about what we proposed to do. And as I did that, I found that a number of people had gotten a flyer that said that we were going to be flying over everybody's house, and flying over the church, and flying over the school, and we're going to make tremendous noise. So I tried to explain that that wasn't the case.
Well, that was the opposition responding, but you were, I was asking you how you communicated. Been a lot of discussion tonight about the flight patterns. Flight patterns basically over the property as the maps show. But who is going to enforce the flight patterns, be they over 500 feet or under 500 feet? I've asked this question of Mr. Woody. Can you explain, Mr. Harris, how you will ensure that the flight patterns will basically stay over the right properties?
Those are the operating instructions we'll give to our pilots.
But what happens if one, if one strays? What happens if one is forced down on another property?
If?
I don't mean an accident, I don't mean anyone being hurt, just forced down, wind stopped.
Well, if, first, let's see, if for some odd reason that, you know, that occurred, I think it's only, it's only occurred once in twenty years at Keratuck County that I can recall, that we had, someone had to land outside the airstrip. But if that was the cur, you just get out, you fold up the glider, and you carry it away. It's very simple, it's very light, it's not going to do any damage. It's a very simple operation to get, to clear it out.
Well, that leads to my next question. Flying over property is well-established not to be trespassing, but landing on property can be trespassing. I've read the North Carolina statute. The FAA makes no exception for hang gliding on this issue, even if the event is accidental. Lower Keratuck is more congested than the airport than Shawboro. We just talked about wind direction and speed can change. I would ask you to give citizens an understanding in lower Keratuck, what to expect and what to do in case one does land. It can be trespassing. What is your, what is the liability to you? What is the liability imposed on the people hang gliding? What is the responsibility to land on it?
Well, we don't want any liability, so we're going to do everything we can to prevent anything like that from ever happening.
But it can happen. Or can it happen, I'll pose to keep it as a question.
Well, it could happen as a car could, you know, go from 158 into your yard, that could happen too.
That is, that's true. But, anyway, those are my questions.
It could happen, that's not the planned operation, and that's not the way we will operate.
But you cannot, can you say that there can never be a case of no trespassing, or wind stoppage, or whatever, leading to a hang glider coming down?
Well, the wind stoppage is not an air, the wind stoppage is not an issue. The glider would be released at high altitude and have plenty of opportunity to come in and land on the property. So if the wind stopped, it's not an issue, the glider just keeps gliding, they have full control of the glider.
Onto what property?
Onto the Cotton Gin property.
You're certain of that?
For tandem hang gliding, yes, I'm certain of that.
Any other persons like to address questions of the applicant? None being heard? Okay.
Commissioner O'Neill, the north-south airstrip is 541 feet from the centerline of the 158. And that's the one that runs parallel to 158. So the closest operation is no closer than 500 feet.
Thank you.
Another question for the applicant?
Yes.
Ms. Lippman?
Mr. Harris, you stated earlier, I'm Paula Lippman.
Nice to meet you.
His wife. Nice to meet you, sir. You stated earlier, this would not, you know, affect any wildlife. And I know that my cousin Jerry Wright was on the wildlife commission, or he was a wildlife commission at one point. I'm sure you're aware that in late August and September, that we have a lot of ducks come in, summer ducks, wood ducks, I forget, penteils, yes, they come in too. Is there not a danger of these ducks interfering with either a plane, which might get out of the way, or a hang glider? You know, as they migrate, and they come to roost, I mean, that's, I worry about, we have a very precious thing in this area, which is, you know, a lot of nature. We have a lot more people, too, than this little map shows, but we do have a lot of nature. And I know that my cousins and I as well are concerned with preserving that. And we really don't want them stressed or to cause any danger. I'm sure you've heard about the eagle and the jet. We don't want anything like that to happen. And what is what impacted with a hang glider?
Well, we fly with geese at the airport.
Yes.
And haven't been any issues from that. And we are, of course, we're leaving, we would leave the Cotton Gin at the end of September, when the migration started. So we wouldn't be there when the birds started coming in.
Well, I think these are the late summer ducks, they come in August and September.
Okay.
So, I guess we'll have to ask my cousin Jerry, who's been sworn in. What about these ducks, Jerry?
I'll address questions.
Okay.
Your question, Mr. Harris, please, thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, want to hear from the parties that may want to speak in opposition to the application? All right, we're going to have a five-minute recess, request from one of the commissioners, thank you. Okay, I'd like to call a meeting back to order. Has the applicant finished his presentation? Okay, those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, is there anyone with a prepared presentation that wishes to speak? You name an address for the record, please.
I'm Howard Ford Jr. I own the property to the north of this proposed project. I live at 139 South Mills Road in Moaya. I'm opposed to this proposed project. Questions come to my mind regarding airspace, flight patterns, and of course, safety. Regardless of how well-planned our traffic activities are, our accidents continue to happen. If an accident should occur over my land, will I have liability? This property is closed to the Jarvisburg Elementary School. What if an accident happens there involving schoolchildren? A minimum of $2 million liability insurance policy must be required to maintain the event that someone on a nearby property is injured or the property is damaged. The approximately 400-foot buffer distance from my south heads road to the north-south landing strip is grossly inadequate. Future developments on my property should not be hindered by the project use or airspace over my property. A few years ago, we gathered in this same room when I requested my land, which adjoining this property to the north, to be rezoned from agriculture to commercial. And the rights vigorously opposed it, given the argument that they wanted everything in their area to remain agriculture. Now they want what amounts to an airport, which is clearly not an agriculture issue. This land has some historical significance in that the southern portion where the east-west airstrip is proposed once belonged to the family of North Carolina Governor Thomas A. Jarvis. The Keratuck County Airport at Maple has adequate facilities for this type of project, and that location is ideal, it is better to keep projects at one location, run and scatter them randomly all over throughout the county. The expense is local, the expense of a local residence. If this project approved, the dangerous precedent will set. Similar project must crop up all over county, and because of this precedent, we will have to be approved. According to the application, the project will, seven days a week, from the 1st of April until the middle of October, traffic congestion peaks during that, this time period on US 158. Will this project increase what is already sometime heavy traffic congestion near the Cotton Gin? I request that you do not approve this project for the following reasons. Unlimited use of adjoining properties airspace, safety issues, potential traffic issues, added congestion, dust, and noise pollution. Like a sore, this project does not need to be allowed to linger and fester, it needs to be eliminated at the beginning. I also have a petition here that I would like to give to you.
We understand that petition's not admissible in this type of hearing.
Okay, I'll let the folks know.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition that has a prepared presentation?
My name's David Weber, and I reside at 6970 Keratuck Highway.
My name's David Weber, and I reside at 6970 Keratok Highway, immediately across the street from this proposed airstrip. I don't really care how, what people do with their land or how they make their living, unless it becomes a situation which is hazardous to the community and to my way of life and my family's way of life. Mr. Harris pointed out traffic during Easter. I dare say that's just a thimbleful. During the normal summer hours, we'll run 200 to 250,000 cars in front of a house at all times during the weekend. Add to that a couple of motorcycle events, and you'll have 1,000 motorcycles running up and down the highway also, which provides a lot of good rubbernecking for the, for the people on the highway. Another thing that has not been brought out, this is a direct path to the Elizabeth City Coast Guard Base. Helicopters are over the house every day. It's also a direct path for Nightingale going up 158 north and south. On top of other kinds of noise, right to the back, we have the direct route and also up the sound for the Navy going to the bombing range in Dare County. If you've ever heard a squadron of F-18s, you'll know it's very loud and add that to the proposed light aircraft going up and down there. Some questions that I would ask. This doesn't help the unemployment for Currituck County, which is a major problem. What's the benefit to the county? Do you get a tax effect? Business license? No. So what's the use of the county, other than a little recreation? The prevailing winds in the summer are 10 to 15 knots from the southwest. That's going to require them to get, hard to get up to 500 feet very quickly. I would say this is another activity where Currituck County is being used to support the businesses of Dare County. I oppose this zoning.
Any other prepared presentations in opposition to this? Ms. Lippman?
Thank you, Chairman Rohr. Commissioner, not yet, we don't. I'm sorry, they fogged up and I can't see a thing. Runways plus planes equals airports. No matter, the runways are restricted to grass, and the two planes are light sport aircraft carrying tandem gliders. Once there, you have to wonder what it would look like in five, 10, 20 years. On the FAA application, Mr. Harris already indicates that he plans to expand his business over time. What if that doesn't happen? Then you still have runways. If you have them, why can't you use them? Besides, an 1,825-foot runway can land a Cessna. And there, you know, Dues Island, you know, I can just see planes coming in to land there. You know, there'd be no reason for them not to logically. Airports devalue surrounding areas. When you say there's an airport, that's someplace you don't want to go unless you're going to the airport. No one wants them in their neighborhoods. At the planning board, this project was described as having noiseless planes that would operate within the glass walls of the Wright's property with up to six flights an hour and be a boon to ecotourism and economic development without devaluing property. That's a wow statement, in my opinion. In fact, we just heard they sound like bumblebees. They can fly up to eight flights an hour, as they do at Currituck Airport. And each flight was 10 to 15 minutes. But this sounds like pretty crowded airspace over 75 acres that's been designated for this use. I said so much before, no new net jobs would be created. So much for economic development in the short term. As for ecotourism, planes flying hang gliders is a stretch. I think we all have an idea of what we think ecotourism is. And we, and this is not what I think it is. I think it's more quiet enjoyment of nature. As for property rights, most people agree that a person should be able to use their property as they wish to reach its highest and best possible use. However, there is a corollary to this rule. No one should be able to adversely affect the property of his neighbor. The Grandy, Jarvisburg, Palts Point area, all of which will be impacted, you know, with the hang gliders and the flights we hear tonight, is no longer full of fields that can be assumed to stay that way forever. Times have changed. Places to eat, a school, several churches, a bank, many businesses, including Ray's Hardware, have slowly been built to accommodate the people living here. So many in fact that they recently put a line and cut us off as our own voting district. For this reason, as well as perceived noise and perceived safety problems, please say no to this use, as it is not in harmony with our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lippman. If any other folks who want to make their thoughts known in opposition to this application, if you don't have a prepared presentation, if you'd like to just raise your hand, so we'll see how many of you are taking that position, maybe we could save some time. If you do have something you'd like to get up and say without reiterating the same arguments over and over again, then we would appreciate that, because we all have a place we'd like to go later tonight. But, you know, you're welcome to speak at this time if you want to. Otherwise, all those in opposition to it, raise your hand, let us count.
My name's Roy Etheridge, and I live in, at 109 River Lane Road in Jarvisburg. Each year during the summertime, there are numerous wrecks in front of the Cotton Gin and Joe's Vegetable Market across the way. There are no turning lanes for people to pull over and, you know, turn into these businesses. So, you know, people are, you know, they're looking one way or another, looking at the Cotton Gin or looking at Joe's, and the car in front of them stops, and, you know, they run in back of each other. It happens all the time. All right, so if you throw an airplane pulling a hang glider going across 158, you can only imagine the problems and all this is, this is going to cause. Although on their flight pattern here, on the one that goes from east to west, they had all their, on the, on the white lines, they got all them going to, to the east. But prevailing wind is west. So if you take that loop, the two loops that they got, and put them on the other side of the field, where in the summertime, where the prevailing wind's going to be, it's going, they're going to be all over those houses and all over 158. I mean, they did a good job of deceiving that everything was going to go out toward the ocean, but it's not. It's going to go across the road. I was at the, the planning board, and they, of course, they were more interested in the number of flights and this and that, but, but nobody discussed about the harmony in that certain area. Now, Mr. McGee over there, McGregor, I mean, he gave us a list, a big list of things that would kick this thing out. And one of them was harmony, safety. And it was numerous, when he was talking, there was a numerous things that he said that could, you know, possibly kick this thing out, where they just don't go together. There are probably several alternatives where Mr. Harris could go. I mean, he's got the airport over there at Pine Island. Maybe you can work out a deal with them. There's other large land areas, you know, throughout the lower end of the county that they could possibly use. Dues Island is one of them. As far as the county, county gets nothing from this. All they get is the headache. And it's just like, I don't want y'all to start laughing, but it's just like the OLF. I mean, y'all spent thousands of dollars trying to defeat that, and you finally did. We're going to have the same thing down there, but like I said, it's going to be a drop in the bucket. We're still going to have the noise factor. We're going to have the safety on this. I mean, it's just, it's the same exact thing. And it's hard for me to believe that, you know, it's just kind of, this is, the decision that y'all have tonight, to me, is a no-brainer. I mean, it's just as simple as that. You spent thousands of dollars to defeat the OLF, and now, you know, somebody wants to put in a little airport there in a little community. And it's just, it's just common sense tells me that it just doesn't belong. And, you know, that's, that's basically the bottom line. Although, you know, it don't have the, the noise and the flights and all that the OLF would have, still, the bottom line is the bottom line. It's the same thing. So anyway, I hope, I hope y'all think about it real hard. Even if you do give them a year lease on this, you know, if, if somebody out there gets killed in front of the Cotton Gin because they're looking at the airplane fly by pulling a hang glider, you know, I hope that y'all would feel some remorse that y'all made an idea, that y'all let these people put this airport in there and make it somebody seriously
Any other speakers in opposition?
My name is Andy Newborn, 7026 Keratok Highway. My family owns a farm on the west side of Keratok Highway at 7026, as well as the farm that runs east and west at 7031 Keratok, which is immediately south of the, one of the airstrips that they show. And I'm looking at the, I've got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I won't try to repeat anything we've already heard. On the map that I'm looking at right here on this computer, the takeoff route that it shows, shows it coming very close to our property line, but does not cross. And the reason it doesn't cross, I'm positive, is because they're not 500 feet. How close can they get to my property line? And at what elevation could they possibly be at when they reach my property line? Could they be 200 feet from my property? And then turn and fly parallel to my property line? That would, they would still be under their self-imposed rules, but that would affect my property in a way that I have not heard addressed tonight. Another comment I would have along the same lines, if they can fly their entire flight pattern and never leave that property, I would think it would be better for everybody when I answer a lot of questions that we've had tonight. But the main question I have not heard is, how close to my property line can they get? And how high could they, how low, I guess would be the question, could they possibly be when they get dangerously close to my property line? My family farms and hunts both of these farms, as well as we rent the farming and hunting rights from the Forbes property, that you've heard Mr. Forbes speak tonight, that's on the north side of this. The restrictions that they have that would be from October to April. I think we have guests, friends, relatives that hunt, starting September 1st, with the opening of dove season, and it will continue. My brother has a, a friend to go turkey hunting tomorrow that could possibly be on one of these farms. I would think that could be expanded to be, say, August the 25th, and that they should close down and move to the Maple Airport and keep it closing until, I'd say, at least the first week of May, when turkey season's closed. That is a, a way that that will affect my property that nobody else has addressed tonight, but I figured that I better, because it's our property. The hours of operation is kind of murky to me. I've heard from 7:30 to dusk. I've heard from 9:00 to 3:00. My house is one of the closer homes to this, as well as my grandmother's, and I would like to have some kind of limit. You know, 7:30 is a good time to fly. It's a good time to sleep if you're, you know, if you're tired. I would like to see them have it from 9:00 to 3:00 or 4:00, something like that. But dusk in July, or say the 20th of June, which is the longest day, dusk is going to be 9:00 o'clock. And I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's something that, as a community, we want. And, you know, 500 foot above your property, that's, you know, somebody could be flying, you know, 500 foot above your house, you're out in your yard trying to enjoy yourself. I think they'd be better off if they stayed within their property lines. And that's just my opinion, suggestion. I'm hoping I can make it now. I've got some other questions. Most of these have been touched on, so I won't do any of this. I would ask that the conditional use permit be limited one, to one year of operation. I know you say they probably won't be able to operate this year, but if you do grant it, let's keep it to one year, so we can see what it is without having to, say, if they get everything rolling in their operation in July, and we're not happy with it, there's nothing that's going to keep them from operating in 2012. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any further speakers in opposition? Okay, those persons wishing to speak in support of the applicant, would you like to come forward? Come forward.
My name's Benjamin Lannan. I live at 136 Forbes Road, which is right behind the Cotton Gin, if you know where it's at, right by the church, in between Jarvisburg Elementary and the church there in BJ's. And I've asked everyone around me, all my neighbors, if that would have bothered them, the operation? And they say no. And of course, I'm biased, also, I'm a pilot. I have my own home-built airplane. It's a, it's not an ultralight, but it's an ultralight-type aircraft. It's a light sport aircraft. And I was curious to see what would happen if this, if this took flight, because to see how people were reacting. I've been asking people for the last six months around, what they would think of somebody, say, me, who has the property, if I wanted to myself, fly my own plane off my own grass strip at my house, or my neighbor's yard, who she said I could fly off of her yard too. But, you know, people don't realize that pilots follow regulations, and the, and the pilots of the light sport aircraft have to follow the same regulations as a private pilot or anyone else. You have, you have regulations, you have, you have altitude limitations, you have places sparsely, in sparsely populated places, or a certain altitude you have to be. You can't fly over certain wildlife areas, you have to be a certain altitude. It's not like anybody who wants to just goes up there and just wings around. Now, if they were all true ultralights, anybody can fly an ultralight. It's not regulated by anybody. There's certain rules that the FAA puts out to tell people what a true ultralight is. And anybody could take an ultralight and fly off their yard if they wanted to. And actually, the FAA has regulations about, I've seen instances where people were complaining about, people flying over, even though they're well, and the regulatory limits. They say that, I think it was 100 feet, I'm not sure the exact, exact altitude, but over 100 feet above an altitude, it's boundaries don't exist. I mean, for property lines, you can't say you can't fly over my house at 100 feet. The FAA will tell you you can't fly over your house at 100 feet, but it's not going to be trespassing if you fly over someone's house at 100 feet. There's a lot of misinformation going on here at night, and I just, I just think people should, people get upset over these, what's going on. It's just not, it's not going to be an airport over there. I really don't believe it is. It's not going to be jumbo jets flying in there, you know? You're not even going to hear these things for the most part. But my neighbors around me, where I live, have all, have all said that they wouldn't mind at all. It's not going to bother them a bit. And I don't think that a business, just because someone wants to open a business, I don't think it has to, has to be positive. I mean, I don't think the county has to get something from their business. They're the ones putting the money up. You know, it's, business is business. People want to have a business and have something going on like that. I don't think there's any rule that says, hey, you've got to give us something, you know, besides, give us a cut of this, you know? Hopefully, someone in the county could, will work with them. I think it's neat that they just want to be at the Cotton Gin. I think it's a beautiful place there, and I think that, I think it'll work well there. Tell you the truth. I've got a lot more I can say, but blah, blah, blah. We've got places to go.
Thank, thank you for being brief. Okay, any other persons would like to speak in support of the applicant? And let me call- And let me caution you that we cannot consider what your neighbor thinks, or what you've heard, what we can only consider is what you think. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Chris Schultz. I am a vice president and general manager of HQ Kites and Designs USA. We're a business located in Palace Point, we're at 134 Freedom Avenue. I'd like to come out in support of the project and Kitty Hawk Kites. Kitty Hawk Kites has been a supporter of ours, we're a supplier of theirs, we do outdoor recreational products, including kites and toys. We sell products locally and internationally, including North and South America. One of the reasons why we moved, we relocated our business here about two years ago from Chesapeake is partially due to Kitty Hawk Kites. I think that understating the local economic influence that Kitty Hawk Kites can have, I think, would be a mistake. You may not necessarily see it immediately, but I think if you think long-term, I think John Harris and Kitty Hawk Kites has proven to be a visionary, so I would certainly give them a little slack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Mr. DeLucia before we go to the next one? The map up there showing the flight pattern, you requesting that to be the only flight pattern that y'all will be allowed to fly? Because Mr. Etheridge brought up about going across 158 with...
I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up. There was a couple of comments made, one about the airstrips. The airstrips are grass, and they're much longer than they need to be, and that's for safety purposes, because you always wanna have more airstrip than less. As far as the flight patterns, the flight patterns are shown in the southwesterly prevailing winds in the summertime, that that... If you look, Ben, can we get to the other one, please? Yeah. If you look at where the yellow line begins, which is down by the impoundments and down by the wood lines, you've got, oh, 16, I can't read that, 1,800 and some feet of, of strip, plus another 550 feet till you get to the highway. The prevailing wind pattern will take the, tow, the tug plane and the ultralight up and be well above the ground before they get to the north-south strip, which gives them the ability to turn back on the site. Bruce actually had prepared this, these, these patterns because they're more familiar with them.
Well, I guess my question is, is you're not gonna start on the east side and go west and be pulling people across the highway?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
So you're not gonna be reversing the pattern where you would be going across the highway, pulling people?
No, sir. This, the way that this is, this, this map has been shown, if we have prevailing northeast wind, we will be starting about 500 feet from the highway and moving east. If we are having a southwest wind, which is prevalent in the summer, we'll be back at the wood line at the very tail end of this, or at the very eastern end of this airstrip, grass airstrip, taking off toward the Cotton Gin, but not pulling over the Cotton Gin or over the highway.
Mr. O'New, if I, if I could comment, it would, it would turn where the yellow line turns, so well before the bypass. It would turn, it could turn either to the north or the south, we could go either direction, and then, and then follow the yellow, the yellow pattern for that wind direction, the white pattern is for the opposite wind direction.
Okay. Thank you. Further statements in support of the applicant? Name and address, please.
My name is David Hughes. I'm a resident of Martins Point in Kitty Hawk, and I rise in support of Kitty Hawk Kites opportunity here. I thank this body for hearing my comments. I've known John Harris for nearly 30 years. As a matter of fact, he gave me one of my first jobs, selling kites. And I can tell you that as a 16-year-old working for Kitty Hawk Kites, I picked up some skills that served me, you know, much later in life. And when you're 16, you don't realize that you're picking up skills that will potentially create greater economic opportunities along the way. And I've seen John start a lot of businesses, and he has a great impact on his community. And I can tell you that I can think of no other economic opportunity that has lower impact, and actually, it serves to bring in guests and raise awareness of our vital ecosystems here. And I can tell you that many, many guests are, are now looking to eco-tourism as, in lieu of a traditional sit-on-the-beach vacation. And it's raising the awareness of the ducks and the geese that migrate through here is all part of this, this opportunity. And having witnessed these flights myself, I can tell you that they take off and land in very low noise, comparative speaking to a typical airport. And I can, living right by the bridge in Kitty Hawk, I tell you during Bike Week, there's a whole lot more noise going on, on that bridge. And I thank you for hearing my comments.
Anyone else? Mr. Snowden?
I wasn't sworn in, I just got in from work.
Wear them in. Just wear them in for this face, okay.
Right on the Bible left?
Bible, that's it. Do you promise, just tell the truth? I'm sorry, left hand on the Bible, right hand. Promise to tell the...
My other right.
Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right. Name and address.
John Snowden, 180 Maple Road. I'm kinda here for two reasons. Number one, I'm the vice chairman of the Airport Board, and I came to speak to the tremendous opportunity we have. Kitty Hawk Kites is a business that's chosen to be in Currituck, and they're a really good tenant at the airport. People have said, I've heard, just in my time standing in the doorway, that we get nothing from this. To the contrary, we get property tax on those hang gliders that are hanged in our, our airport and the ultralights. And Kitty Hawk Kites is our anchor tenant, they're our anchor commercial tenant out there. They attract people back across that bridge, and that's what we wanna do. We don't want the dollars to stay in Dare County, we wanna get people to come back across this bridge. And a tremendous opportunity of getting people to stop at the Cotton Gin in Jarvisburg, or come back and discover not only the Cotton Gin, but Joe's Market, Andy and Dennis's produce that they've got there. There's just so many opportunities that can come from this. And in the time I've known Mr. Harris, in five years, I'd say, I mean, he, he's a tremendous corporate citizen. I mean, we, Kitty Hawk Kites is a brand that's recognized around the world. It's just like Gravedigger. I mean, we've got two big, huge things in Currituck that we can capitalize on, and what we need to do is, is promote businesses like this. This is a business that's in Currituck that wants to go and expand to a second location. Secondly, I'm here, I reside in Maple, right next to the airport. We have problems with general aviation aircraft, don't have so much problems with jets because they get up and leave, but I have an operation, we farm, I rent about 25 acres around the airport. And people come to our farm to pick things or just to see how things grow, and, and there's the hang gliders. They stay over the airport, they stay on that property, they don't fly low, they, they go and get up high because they wanna release. And, and you just have to come out there and see the tremendous amount of control that, that you can witness being a neighbor of the airport. When, when the tow plane lets the hang glider go, the tow plane departs, and he comes running down and he lands. I mean, it looks like a falling dove, but he's in, he's in a complete control of the aircraft. And I can't speak more highly of them being a good neighbor to the citizens around the airport, around, around an existing airport. Noise, 158 in front of the Cotton Gin makes more noise than those hang gliders make. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of noise off the highway. You would never notice any additional sound coming from the hang gliders. And in the time that I've been here publishing the newspaper and now farming, there's only been one incident in about eight or 10 years that I can recall, and that was a total mechanical failure, but the pilot brought it down, and he brought it down in the, in the edge of the swamp on South Currituck Road. So I came tonight to speak in, in favor of this because it is economic development, Mr. Harris will grow his business, he's, he's a, got a demonstrated track record. We couldn't ask for a better person to try to do this in Currituck. And I'm asking you to vote in favor of this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further speakers in favor of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman and other, or acting Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, my name is Douglas Brinley, I have a business at 1023 Ocean Trail in beautiful downtown Corolla. I manage over 500 vacation rental homes in Corolla and Duck, and this is a tremendous outdoor attraction, activity, that we need to have for the traveling families that come to our area. We need these sorts of activities, these sorts of things for them to do. Kitty Hawk Kites operates these sorts of outdoor events in 10, 12 different locations in three counties? I think it's three counties, because they have operations down in Okeechobee as well. And they, they're first class, they operate extremely well. And I, I can say from my experience that the movement of the activity closer to the main body of the people they're attracting is gonna increase the use, increase the number of people that are traveling through the county and stopping off at these other businesses, buying their services and their goods. I got a pilot's license in '98, and there's nothing like it. If you haven't flown over these, these lands and these waters and seen this from above, you'll, you'll, you'll never forget it, and you'll never stop wanting to come back and do it again. This is a, a good opportunity, and myself and others that, in my industry, I'm sure, are in favor of this. Thank you.
Any further speakers in favor? Come forward.
Commissioners, my name is Cheryl Bell, and I live at 114 Nathan Drive, and that's about 4,200 feet from the proposed permit, and I've known John Harris for about 25 years, and I'm a native Tar Heel, and I'm very much for this, and I believe it will help the development of Currituck County. I moved over from Dare County, and I would like for us to have a nice harmony together instead of bickering, so I'm all for John.
I'm Brad Kovak from 134 Mac Jones Road up in Moyoc. One of the things that I don't believe is mentioned here yet either tonight, and that's what I wanted to speak on, was the last time I've driven through Grandy and all down through this area, all you see is businesses closing, after another, closing. The, the hard times have hit that area, a lot of the businesses have closed, and each day I drive down through there, I see a new business that's closing. Now, we have a opportunity here to bring a new business into that area, and hopefully from this business will come support businesses that could possibly flourish in this area also. So I wanna make sure we keep that in mind as we talk about moving a business in Currituck County. We're not losing it, he's expanding it, he's moving it into an area that could prosper, prosper from this opportunity. The, the food businesses that have closed up down through there might have an opportunity to reopen and support some of these people that are coming to the hang glide also. As you're by the Maple Airport, unless you happen to stop your vehicle and pull over and look up, you never even know they're there. The, the tug vehicle pulls them up quickly, disconnects from them, and drops back down out of the way, and all you hear is a quiet whisper of a kite fly over. Most of the time, you can possibly even hear them talking, it's that quiet. So there's no concern of the surrounding areas constantly hearing these vehicles fly over them, or the planes flying over them. And we're, we're talking about the harmony with the wildlife, and I can assure you there won't be any hunters going up and shooting from these vehicles that, that we're trying to protect here. They're gonna go, they're gonna, in harmony with the, the area, fly with the birds. There's, there's a, there's a movie out that you may have seen where they actually fly side-by-side with the geese, and that's important to note, too. Thank you.
More worried about hunters shooting at them, I think. Any further applicant, any further speakers in support of the applicant, Mr. Pindowetz?
My name is Uli Benowitz. I don't live in the county, but I have a business in this county, right across the street from the Cotton Gin. I want to bring up one subject that hasn't been brought up, and that is synergy. A single business in Currituck County, retail business, has a very tough time attracting people from their county to come back over to Currituck. Nobody comes ever for a single purpose, or very few people. The biggest thing is synergy. We have done that with the Cotton Gin over the last three years as the weeking ranish, and it's worked wonderful. You give them a reason to do more than one thing, and you will bring them together. And what John is proposed to bring to the table is phenomenal synergy. Obviously, for us, we're in the food service business as well, so we'd love to see additional traffic, mid-week traffic we're talking about. And, and the synergy that is created there is really, really helpful. We need to, as many speakers said before, we need to bring more business into Currituck County mid-week, so it doesn't just become one big traffic jam on the weekends with no business during the week. And the synergy that this would bring to the table, there's, it's not a competing, but it's a synergy. We do already wine tours and brewery tours, and with these hang gliders come people, the rest of the family, that don't fly, and we need to provide something for them to do at the same time. So please keep in mind that the synergy is important, we need to attract further business into the county. And I've known John way over 20 years, and he is clearly a visionary in what he does. And what he does with his booking, he has a booking machine over there, and it's incredible. So if we can use his booking machine to the benefit of Currituck County, that is exactly what the tourism bureau would love to see, I'm sure. Thank you very much for your time.
Further support of the applicant?
Hi there, this is Mark Jorins. I just wanna talk briefly about the quality of Kitty Hawk Kites. I arrived to the area about nine years ago, I live in Collington Harbor, Kill Devil Hills, and saw these hang gliders fly, and I'm like, I gotta try that. So I went up and took some lessons, and then I actually took some lessons to learn to become a sport pilot by, with the instruction from, from the folks at Kitty Hawk Kites. And just the quality of the instruction and the focus on safety when I became a pilot, and I'm not sure if Johnny Thompson is here, but Johnny Thompson is an examiner to teach people to become sport pilots, and he's one of the few examiners in the area, we're actually on the Eastern Seaboard to teach sport pilot, and he's right here in Dare County and Currituck. And so, just wanna talk about the quality of that organization, it had made, it made me a safe pilot, and I'm, I have a, a couple of light sport aircrafts over in Manio at Dare County, so, and sometimes fly over to, to the Manio, or which airport? The, Currituck Airport, I'm sorry, at, to the Currituck Airport, and it's really enjoyable and really excited to have an organization like this, you know, participate here. And just as a quick note on the, on the flight pattern, oh, this is another thing, I don't know how many times I went to the subway up at the Exxon Station near Maple, there's, near the Maple Airport, because there's only, there's hardly any places to eat, and, and everyone just goes to that subway, so especially for folks and visitors coming to the area to get food, there's just hardly any food things, and there's more food locations around the proposed location, so a lot of good volume of folks. And, and also, when folks come to see the organization and, and go and take these tandem lessons and tandem flights, there's this, a huge, family members come with them, it's not just one person, everyone wants to take pictures and, and photos, and, you know, the Cotton Gin will be in the background, and photos of the, of their flight, and so really exciting. And the final note, just on the, as far as the takeoff pattern, especially with the prevailing winds from the southwest on the map, being a pilot, with the southwest winds flowing here, the planes are gonna be taking off from right to left on the map, and with those southwest winds, they get up really quickly. I mean, they're light sport aircraft, so they, they rocket up into space, and so they're gonna be at 500 feet very quickly. And so, and then when the pilot lets go of the hang glider at 2,000 feet, they actually oftentimes shut off their engine and quickly glide down, so really, the only noise that's happening is during the takeoff process. And so I just wanted to point that on the map. Thanks.
We'd encourage you, by the way, to remind your friends in Dare County that their gas prices are cheaper up here than they are down there, too. Okay. Any other speakers in support of the applicant? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Minton, and I've been a lifelong resident of the Outer Banks, and the last 12 years, I've worked in Corolla, and now I live in Corolla. And I'm proud to be a resident of Currituck County now. I've always lived in Dare, but now I'm with Currituck. I'm very proud of the success that we have had in the tourism industry. I've seen a tremendous increase over the last 20 years. If we want this to continue, we've got to be progressive. And one of the things we have to do is offer all kinds of activities for our guests that are coming in, and that's what's gonna bring them in. And I've sat here and I've listened to a lot of people talk, and I wonder what we would have told Orville and Wilbur Wright if they were standing in front of you today. Would you tell them no?
Good evening. My name's...
My name's Rex Schneck. I live in Swanby Shores on Collington Island, also have property in Water Lily. I came here because of the water, actually, for kite surfing and wind surfing, and John Harris and Kitty Hawk Kites got me into taking a hang gliding, doing hang gliding one time, and now I have my sport pilot license and enjoy it thoroughly. One of the things I wanted to talk about was back to the wildlife, about bothering birds or ducks or anything like that. These ultralights are not going very fast, and they're very quiet, and a lot of ultralights are used to study birds and other different types of wildlife because of that fact. So I'm in total support of Kitty Hawk Kites and John Harris.
Thank you. Anyone else hadn't signed up? Come forward.
I'm Rachel Smith, and I live at 207 Wedgewood Drive in Moyoc, and I've been with Kitty Hawk Kites for about fifteen, sixteen years. And one of the things that we do besides customer service and sell is encourage people to do the activities that they offer, and hang gliding is one of them, and the ultralights from the airport, and have a good safety record, and we have no qualms about telling these people and giving them the information that they need to make their appointments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Weaver?
My name's Bruce Weaver. I live in Southern Shores on the Outer Banks. There was a comment made earlier that stuck with me, and that was that we were able to fashion our flight paths in order to deceive people. That couldn't be any further from the truth. What we've tried to do is illustrate all the possible issues that may come up with this and answer those questions. It's important to understand that when the hang glider and the ultralight take off, it's their intention to get up as high as they can, as fast as they can. Flying close to someone else's property at low altitudes, we don't want to fly at low altitudes, ever. I mean, if we could go straight up in an elevator, we'd rather do that. The ultralight that we have is built to gain altitude as quickly as possible. So the idea with these flight patterns you see, it may be, it may not be understood that we're not going to be flying at five hundred feet on all these colored lines, that's just a flight pattern that we would take. We would be, you know, at fifty feet, five seconds after takeoff, a hundred feet, ten seconds after takeoff, for instance, and trying to gain altitude as fast as we can to get up and away from the ground as quickly as we could. To further demonstrate that, I think someone talked earlier about us flying in the southwest prevailing winds. We would be starting with those wind conditions as far away as we possibly could from the road, and taking off towards the road, gaining altitude the whole time, and turning before we get to the road. So the noise issue with the majority of the conditions that we fly in, there wouldn't be much noise at all noticed by anybody. And one final point as far as the safety of the program, I think we've proven our safety at the airport and our operations that we've had so far out at Currituck Airport. Additionally, I took my four-year-old son tandem hang gliding for his birthday. I certainly would not do that with my own child if I thought that there is any possibility of danger to him. So the safety of the operation should not be in question. Thank you.
Any other speakers in favor of the applicant? If not, I'll give the applicant a chance to rebut opposition statements, if you have anything further you'd like to do. Hold on just a minute, Mr. Harris, Mr. Wright would like to speak.
Just wanted to touch base on what we were trying to achieve with Mr. Harris. It's been maybe over five years that we've had ongoing discussions with Mr. Harris and Kitty Hawk Kites. And I finished school, came home, started to work at the Cotton Gin thirty, thirty-five years ago, and there was a time it was a lot easier in business to stop people on the road. But the last easily ten years, the road is becoming harder and harder to engage people, to get them to stop. It's very hard to get people to come back to see us at Jarvisburg. It was much easier ten, twenty years ago to get people to drive back, and they're busier, the road getting here, it's just much harder to get people to come back to mainland Currituck. So we travel, trying to find things for the store, a lot of places we are in the industry, Kitty Hawk Kites is in somewhat the same industry and different things. They're just very respected, and it just seemed logical when they had some interest that it would be a way, getting back to what Uli said, that you're trying to find anything where we can get synergy where people might come back. Obviously, during the week, in the mornings, it's not very hard to figure out, it's a very slow time. If you look at their reservations, people just don't get out of cars and get in the hang gliders, they make reservations. They're hoping they'll see, maybe, to stop at the store, they'll engage, maybe they'll come back more, but anyone that they would help us bring back, Monday through Thursday or Friday, I mean, it would be just a big benefit, even if it's only a few people. I don't, I wonder sometimes with these people talking, you know, it's very difficult now running a business. It's not very easy, it's much more difficult the last few years. And so anything we could do, even if it's something small, the synergy that they might bring would be very appreciated. I mean, we have a lot of employees, we pay the people through the winter. It's not easy trying to keep everybody going year-round, and so the synergy that these folks might would bring, maybe for some folks, it doesn't seem very significant, but just a few people during the week, if that's the bookings they have in the morning and they're very important, could really mean a lot to the Cotton Gin and a lot to our family, a lot to our employees. We employ a lot of folks, and I don't think they would find it to be insignificant, that people made comments that, you know, we're not going to be helping the economy. As Uli said, it's just all of it together, if we just keep trying to help and add things, maybe, you know, we can survive all of it, because it's certainly not a very easy time just trying to maintain your business. And so we obviously think that the chance to operate with these people, somebody comes to see them, they walk in our store, they go to see Uli at a brewery, I went to see the people up at the diner, males, and, you know, they'd just be thrilled if somebody was there hang gliding, and, I mean, we don't have a place for them to eat, but they could go to have lunch. I mean, so, I appreciate you hearing it, and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
All right, applicant?
Thank you. Let's see, one of the comments was made about flying over adjoining properties airspace, and we, again, we plan to be at five hundred above if we do, but we have plenty of room to stay over the property. So I just don't see it being an issue, and also the FAA controls airspace. And on the noise side of things, you know, a tractor working one of these fields probably makes a lot more noise than one of the aircraft makes. And that's it. Thank you all very much.
Any further comment? Mr. Wright?
My name is Jerry W. Wright. I live at 204 Jerry's Way. My brother and I, Tommy, own this property here. There is more acreage than what has been sowed and denoted in this entire tract. There's almost two hundred acres in that tract of land that we have there. I'm the managing partner of Dues Island Club. Dues Island Partners and myself have no plans to utilize this airstrip for any purpose at all. We have five partners, one of my partners does have jet aircraft. It takes four thousand feet to land his aircraft. He is thrilled that the airport at Currituck has been expanded. He could not land on this piece of property if you concreted the whole piece in concrete. He couldn't land on this piece of property. And there's been a lot of comment in the community by people, basically, that it's for people that's coming to Dues Island. No one from Dues Island will utilize its airstrip for purposes of coming or going at Dues Island unless they come out and buy a ticket from Mr. Harris. We're here tonight because we appreciate Mr. Harris, and we appreciate what he's doing for Currituck County. We appreciate his record. When all of this started coming up, there was a push to push Mr. Harris out of the airport, and I'm not sure where he was going, but I thought that was a mistake. And so we went and started talking to Mr. Harris, and he is much like Dennis Anderson in that he's a visionary, and he wants to do good things for our area. And so we hope that he will consider what's going on and give us a year to prove to our neighbors and to ourselves that this can be something good for our community. Thank you.
Any further comment? Were you sworn in prior?
I need to swear.
Left hand of the Bible, raise your right hand. You promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and address for the...
My name is Joe Howington. I run Tar Heel Produce across from the Cotton Gin, and I'm here, I've got neighbors that, you know, are proposing this, I got their whites who like this, and I have no objection to any of them, I just want to, Bill, I know Johnny Thompson who works for Kitty Hawk Kites for thirty-five years. Him and my brother-in-law started flying together thirty, twenty-five, thirty years ago, and Johnny's a great pilot, I just want to tell you all about it, that, you know, he's in good hands at Kitty Hawk Kites because he's a good pilot. And I've been up in the air up here over Currituck, airplane with my brother-in-law, Bob, and there's not a prettier sight in the world than flying over Currituck County. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
There being no further comment, then I'll close the evidentiary phase of the hearing.
Chairman, I have a question I need to ask Mr. DeLucia, and it's in response to a point that Mr. Newbern raised. From where the runway is, the east-west runway to Mr. Newbern's property line, what is that Are you talking about the parallel line?
Probably, it's probably a thousand feet.
I Googled it, Google Earth, and I'm looking at it now, and it's going parallel the path that goes back to Dues Island, right?
Yes, yes.
And I assume Mr. Newbern's property line is the hedgerow just south of where the winery's at today.
That's what I believe.
About eleven hundred feet at its closest. So that gives them ample room to make their turnouts and whatnot? Is that what they're saying? Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Then we will close the evidentiary phase of the hearing. Any discussion or action by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a comment. Being on the Airport Advisory Board and also now being the ex-officio on the Airport Advisory Board, I can't say anything but kudos to John Harris and Kitty Hawk Kites. Their operations at the airport have been exceptional, and I just, I can't give them enough credit for the positive ventures that they have brought to Currituck Regional Airport.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to the Commissioner that represents this area.
I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to take action on that, I was acting chairman today, although I know I can do that. I'd be glad to entertain a motion by any other member of the Board of Commissioners.
I'll make the motion to approve of the one-year permit. I think, Mr. Woody, that's, we had addressed, and that's what his proposal was, to give them a year to prove themselves.
Does that include the staff's recommendations?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 6A on the agenda, the Chamber of Commerce.
Just give them five minutes to clear out.
We'll give you guys a few minutes to clear out. Mr. Flores, will you be presenting for the chamber?
Does this mean we...
Five-minute recess, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've asked for a five-minute recess, time to clear out, thanks. Okay, let's call the meeting back to order, please.
See you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving on to item 6A, I can see the Chamber of Commerce rates just a bit higher than wastewater in Currituck County, so we'd like to give you an opportunity to present your proposal.
We're diversified. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Mike Flores. I am the chairman of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I'm here this evening to answer any questions about the proposal that is before you, for the chamber to provide cooperative services to work with the Tourism Bureau on the project called BiLocal. We're very pleased to be, to have an opportunity to work with the staff, and we're very eager to get started. So I don't really have a prepared presentation on this. I think if you have all the information there in front of you, we can answer any questions that you might have. Yes, Mr. Chairman, my first question is, is I'm assuming that the Economic Development Department, the Tourism Department, and the County Manager's Office are all recommending approval of this proposal?
Yes, sir, we are.
And the funding's available for the proposal?
Yes, sir, it is.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Get to work.
Thank you very much. Get right on it.
Okay, move on to item seven, amendments to wastewater ordinances. Mr. Irving?
Good evening. I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the amendment for the wastewater. I mean, or I can start and say why we had to amend the wastewater ordinances. The North Carolina Division of Environment and Natural Resources Division of Water Quality requires that we have both ordinances, the fats, oil, and grease ordinance and the wastewater ordinance, the sanitary sewer ordinance, and we needed to add Moyoc Commerce, or Maple Commerce Park to the ordinance as we have that permit. And the goal was, was to change the ordinance, to add that, and I had changed it to all Currituck County systems. We can move forward with the ordinance, I guess, if we would mention the specific systems, which of course would be Moyoc Commons, Newtown Road, Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District at this time, were listed on the original ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my concern would be, and I've talked with the county manager, and I've had a couple people call me about this, is as the Moyoc wastewater system is brought online, it's not going to be mandatory hookup for people that aren't part of the district, correct?
That's correct.
And I just wanted to reconfirm, so that the folks that have called me will understand that this is not creating a system where everybody in Moyoc has the hookup.
It is not. I think that was the point Commissioner Others brought up. The ordinance that you have in front of you that covers those districts, it is mandatory in those particular districts, but if you want to take this and project it to future wastewater systems, we are not proposing that it's mandatory in Moyoc, nor at this time are we necessarily contemplating that that project, that enterprise fund, would actually compromise a district. Those issues would have to be addressed when that system comes to light and we work through it, but that system is not being proposed as a mandatory system.
So I'll move for approval, then. So, I'll move for approval, then.
Have a motion?
I second that.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Um, item number eight, appointments to fire an EMS board. Is anybody ready for appointments, or we still discussing?
Uh, I'm ready to make the one to replace Mr. Stagner. Uh, I'd like to put, uh, Paul Beaumont on firing EMS board.
Yeah, that's for District Four.
Yes.
The, uh, the other three are offered to you as a, a slate of nominations, uh, that you can either accept in full or replace, but it's a, uh, nominations placed in front of you by the volunteer fire departments, um, to represent their interest in, on the advisory board.
And I believe the Chairman has sent us several letters or a couple of letters strongly asking us to appoint these.
Uh, yes, he has.
And there's no, uh, requirement that the appointments be of residents in the residence district of the specific appointer?
The, the, the three being placed in nomination, there is a, a, um, unagreed upon how they will be represented. The, the Moyaw and Knott's Island community comes together and appoints a, or recommends a northern district. Uh, Crawford and Lower Currituck come together and propose a lower district, and Corolla and Corova come together and propose an outer banks district. So, in their slate of nominations, they are nominating somebody that would represent those specific districts. As far as Commissioner recommendations, uh, there is no requirement that your recommendation necessarily sits in the exact district that you are in. I think it's encouraged, but it's certainly not a recommendation or a requirement.
Because we don't have the list in front of us of the, who the fire departments are.
You had it, uh, you had it from a previous meeting.
It's not on today's.
You got George.
It was George Bergamini.
Bergam.
Bergamini.
Yes. Mitch Copeland and Kurt Black are the three that they're recommending.
Those are three placed in nominations from the Volunteer Fire Department. Again, for your consideration, you can accept that as a full slate, you can replace one or all, or it's at your discretion, but that's the recommendation from the Volunteer Fire Department.
I personally have met George on several occasions, and he's a first-class guy. I think he's an Assistant Chief at Corolla and maybe Elizabeth City at the Coast Guard Base.
Isn't, uh, Commissioner Idlet the Commissioner that is appointed to the Fire Board?
Yes, sir, he is.
Okay. He told me that he was fine with the recommendations, that he would work with whoever the fire departments recommended, and he was fine with that.
Okay, do we, uh, have a motion then to accept the recommendations made by the Fire EMS Board?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Item eight A, Tourism Advisory Board Appointment. I think that's Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an appointment to the, um, Tourism Board. Um, I've strived to find someone in my district, voting district, for this position. Um, and I have located a resident who lives in Charboro but owns a, a business in Moyaw, um, Grim Sandwich Shop. So, I'd like to appoint Jeff Nelson to the Tourism Board to serve, um, at the outgoing term of Vivian Simpson, who's done a tremendous job. So, I also want to thank her for that, but I do want to make that appointment of Jeff Nelson to the Tourism Board.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Vote on it.
Call the question. She made the nomination. I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second. All, all, if in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mistress report. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, just a couple announcements. Um, at the Airport Advisory Board, Chris Daly brought a couple vehicles that have been donated, um, to the, um, Crawford Fire Department to assist at the airport for any type of, um, fire, um, I'm not the professional on that, but, um, he, he did a demonstration. So, I want to thank him and commend him on the, um, contributions that he's received for the, um, airport, on behalf of the airport. Also, on May seventh, the Saturday, the Moyaw Ruwetan Club is doing their All Wheels Event at Border Station from eight until one. Um, if you haven't gotten raffle tickets, they are raffling off a truck that was refurbished by the high school students. So, I encourage you to come out Saturday morning from eight to one for that. Um, actually, tonight, the youth softball began from the Recreation Board. And then also this Saturday from nine until three at the JPNAP, the youth baseball, um, today is, or that, the Saturday is their field day. Um, lastly, um, and but not leastly, um, the Moyaw Fire Department will be having a fish fry and cornhole contest beginning on, at five o'clock on the fourteenth. So, again, I encourage all of you all to come out and participate and support your local community events.
Thank you. Mr. Patrick?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Yes, I'd only like to, uh, comment on the Osama bin Laden and, uh, good riddance and, uh, you know, the, seeing the elation of the people in this country on TV, stopping a baseball game as they cheered. Uh, it bothered me a bit thinking here we are cheering because of the death of an individual, and then I got to thinking about, you know, this is great. Gives a little bit of closure to nine eleven, and, uh, I just, uh, want to remember May first now.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge?
Follow-up on what Mr. Martin said, ditto to our men and women in uniform. They are without a doubt professionals and they make us proud every day they serve us. Uh, last, um, Wednesday night, Commissioner Gilbert, Manager Scanlon, and myself attended a district meeting for the County Commissioners Association. Uh, so far, I think we took away from that meeting that the leadership in the General Assembly promised not to balance the state's budget was on the backs of counties, and it does appear like they're holding to their promise at this point in time. So, I think that's good news for the counties.
Excellent. Mr. O'Neal?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reiterate, reiterate our Board's objection to, uh, the North Carolina Department of Transportation looking to charge the Knott's Island Ferry as a toll route. And I'd like to reiterate again that there is not a county road that allows the people from Knott's Island to, uh, travel to the mainland of Currituck. I would say that them and Ocracoke, well, Ocracoke, there's no road, period. But I would say that, um, Knott's Island certainly fits that unique, uh, circumstance, that Ocracoke that you have to go through Virginia Beach to come to Currituck. And I'm concerned about the school kids and, and, and not just the school kids, just everybody that lives and, and is a part of Currituck. I'm just concerned about, uh, starting to charge a ferry, uh, toll. And, um, I would like to, uh, see, you know, I noticed that Representative Spears in, um, Terrell County introduced a bill that would limit where they could not do, uh, a toll for Ocracoke because there was no road. I would like that we would send a letter to our Representative Owens and ask him to amend that bill to include Currituck County as well, because we don't have a North Carolina maintained road where our people can traverse back and forth between Knott's Island and the mainland of Currituck. So, unless the Board objects, I would like to instruct the clerk and the manager to get that letter sent out tomorrow, asking Representative Owens to attach us to that bill or amend it, or whatever he needs to do to, uh, try to look after that issue. And I hear no objections.
Objection.
My other issue that I would like for some kind of work session or something to be brought forward is the problem that we're having on the north beach. I believe Mr. Woody has compiled a list of twenty-seven businesses operating on the north beach. Uh, I believe a couple of them are legal, but the vast majority are not legal, even if you stretch the home occupation, um, designation as some like to do. Um, we have got to address that north beach. There are needed services up there that cannot be provided. Corolla, it cannot be the only service area for the outer banks. We have got to address this issue, and it's kind of like whistling past the graveyard. For the last several years, we keep thinking that north beach is going to go away and cure itself. But it's time for this Board to make some tough decisions and, and look at the, the north beach and how services are being delivered, because the services that are being delivered up there illegally are necessary services that have to be provided if we're going to invite tourists into Currituck County to spend their dollars. And I no longer want to keep whistling past the graveyard. And I would like for Mr. Woody and the staff to prepare a work session for us so that we can have a, a conversation on where we're going. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on a couple items, uh, just recently. Ms. Gilbert and I had the pleasure to serve as volunteers over at the Duck Wine Festival, which I think this is the third year of it, and it was a sellout again, over five hundred tickets were sold. The gross proceeds were over fourteen thousand dollars. And the net proceeds will benefit three charities, one of which is Currituck Kids. That's a homegrown charitable group right here in Currituck County that benefits our school-age kids. So, I want you to stop and think, whenever we have events like this, the tremendous good that it does. Network for Endangered Sea Turtles and Friends of Jockeys Ridge were the other two participants. It was a fantastic event. Food was great. Lots of people had a good time. And somebody told me that the weather was always like that in Duck, but I don't believe it. But, uh, it was a great day, anyway. Another thing I'd like to comment on, our homegrown hero who is just here, Dennis Anderson, uh, there's an article about him in the Wall Street Journal, which was really fascinating today, and I thought that was exceptional. He was just telling me about a tour he's going on for seventy-some days around the world, which just sounds like it's going to be a fantastic opportunity to talk about Currituck. And he now has T-shirts printed that say Grave Digger, Currituck County, which I think is great. Uh, I did look him up on Wikipedia and found out they have his address right in Popular Branch, even though the Wall Street Journal still had him in Killdover Hills, but we're working on that. So, I'd just like to, to offer our congratulations to him for the work he's done. He's a tremendous humanitarian, in particular with things he does for Make-A-Wish Foundation. That's all I have. Uh, Mr. Scanlon, you have some comments tonight?
Just to remind the Board, uh, we're moving to look at a, uh, our first budget work session with the Board for next Wednesday, starting at eight-thirty. I'll get an email out to you. Uh, we will need an additional day that we will look at putting together, and unless the Board objects, we certainly can roll Commissioner O'Neal's request into that day and spend a couple hours on that, uh, as well as on the budget. But we'll, uh, we'll start working on our budget with the Board, uh, next Wednesday.
Well, I hope you're all as excited about that as I am.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll lay awake in anticipation. Just like Christmas.
Boy, how can I follow up what I'm going to say? Uh, I would like to just again remind everybody about the National Day of Prayer that's coming Thursday at noon time over at the Judicial Building. Um, even though things are tough, they're economically tough for a lot of people, we do have a lot to be thankful for, and we saw an example of what positive thinking can finally do for this country, uh, last night. People, as Mr. Martin said, people rallied just on the spur of a moment.
Well, it's a good, good point, and I meant to make acknowledge that, the fact that it was SEAL Team Six from Virginia Beach that got that mission accomplished, and we should all be proud of those guys up there.
Hoo-ah!
Yeah, hoo-ah. Okay. God bless them. The business seeming to be completed tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Flights at night here recently.
Good evening.